... have quarrels. So noting the hour and presence of a quorum, I would like to call this emergency meeting of the Acton Board of Selectmen order. And I will turn it over to Bill McGinn, as who is chair of the Acton Board of Health, who will explain the purpose of the meeting and lead the discussion from there. Bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Benson. So I'd just like to begin with a introduction regarding virtual meetings as authorized by the governor. So this is a, as Mr. Benson mentioned, an emergency meeting about the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. It's being conducted under emergency provisions because of developments over the weekend where there was a rapid deterioration in the COVID infections in town. And we felt it prudent to have our boards gather to hear the reports from town officials and make any necessary conclusions or policy or endorsements of actions by the staff. So hence the emergency, the speed of working under the emergency. The meeting is being conducted remotely as authorized by Governor Baker, executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and the local state of emergency in Acton as declared by the Acton Board of Selectmen and the Boards of Health, due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. During this public meeting, we will obviously provide access to the members of the public by either Zoom or teleconference, as posted on the meeting agenda. And it's our intention to allow limited public questions or comments during the course of the meeting. Typically, it's after an item has been introduced and discussed, we would offer an opportunity for public comment. It's not unlimited public comment. I just offer that generally, it's, you know, we like to make sure that it stays on topic and that it doesn't become repetitive, but we certainly welcome public input. So with that, I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Health to order. And I see we have a quorum. So good evening, everyone. Our agenda for tonight is a little bit ad hoc. Our intention was to hear a report from the town staff as to the developments regarding the COVID. And then I believe the town staff intends to present some recommendations to both boards. The idea would be the boards would then discuss these recommendations and either endorse or modify them. And then if there's some leftover, I'll say time, but if there's an opportunity toward the end of the meeting, there's some informational items that I think would be helpful for the Board of Health to present to the Board of Selectmen, just for their awareness and potential input. So with that, I'd like to introduce members of our board, just because I believe we have a rich background of talent for members of the board. And I just have to scroll down here to make sure I can see everyone. I don't want to... Ah, yes. Well, so I'm going to start from on the list on my screen. There's Dr. Rika Singh is one of our members. She is both a MD doctor and a PhD doctor and teaches infectious diseases at one of the local Massachusetts medical colleges. Also joining us tonight is Mr. Mark Conaby. He is a local business owner. The business is involved in environmental remediation. He's a civil engineer. He's an expert in environmental remediation, and he's also a Massachusetts attorney. So moving another direction, I see Dr. William Taylor. Dr. Taylor is a medical doctor who is both the director of the Emergency Services at Atlanta General and a director in the Medicare program focusing on quality, making sure we're delivering quality. So he provides us expert medical advice. And missing, I don't see tonight, is Ms. Becetta and Mr. Cruz, but Ms. Becetta is formerly with the Department of Environmental Protection in Massachusetts. And Mr. Cruz is actually an engineer who develops vaccines for Pfizer up in their Andover location. So we have a rich... Oh, and I see, I'm sorry, and Dr. Jacoby. Hi, I see your face. So Dr. Jacoby is also, he's a practicing dentist and an expert on infection and infection control. So we have, as I say, a very rich, diverse board that brings, I think, a good, strong bench of talent. Acton is very lucky to have these people as town residents and willing to volunteer their time. I'd also just briefly introduce, I know everyone pretty much on both boards knows the staff, but Cheryl Ball and Heather York. Cheryl is the director of the Health Division in the Land Use Department and but is responsible for the Public Health in Acton, along with Director Heather York, who's director of the Acton Public Health Nursing Service. And in terms of, and I see we have Mr. Mangiarati, oh, John, please help me, did I say that right? Okay. Who is the town manager. So with that, I would ask if Cheryl, I believe traditionally we start, and you would please bring us up to speed on recent developments.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So as you know, this Acton changed from a green metric with the state to yellow this past week with an increase in numbers. It's getting very concerning, which is one of the reasons why we decided to have this meeting tonight. We've spent better part of this week, or actually last week, it's only just this week, it's only started, but basically getting out guidance to our retail stores, making sure they're following all the COVID guidelines to try to keep our residents safe, especially while they're shopping for Thanksgiving. You know, we have, John has done a PowerPoint presentation where we'll go over some of the concerns that we're seeing, and we can talk about those further as the meeting goes on. So, you know, and, you know, some of the things that they're planning are doing an outreach to the public, like massively changing our messaging and trying to get it out through all avenues to try to make sure that our residents are aware of what's going on and the need to remain vigilant and stay safe. So that's all I have for now, because we're going to get into a little bit more of it as the meeting goes on.
Sorry, had to unmute there for a second. I was a little slow on the finger. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Heather, would you be able to add to that?
Good evening, everyone. So I was going to give an update on the numbers overall. I'm not sure, John, if you wanted to put the slideshow up at the same time?
Yes, yeah, I was, I was gonna, absolutely, sure.
Did you want to start?
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I get, why don't I get started here? So I just wanted to take a moment, thank you to the board members from both boards for assembling on short notice. Over the weekend, we had some news that kept coming in that was a little bit alarming, and we thought we could have a conversation about the activity and the cases that we've been seeing. We're, in addition to the 15 members of the panels and staff that are here, we have 128 attendees in the Zoom right now. So it's certainly something that caught people's attention, so it's good that we're having this opportunity. There are some cases that we've seen, let me see if I can get this thing going here. All right, so that's showing there. So we've been tracking cases since March and throughout the summer and earlier this fall, you know, we're starting to trend in this direction, starting to trend upward. But as of this past week, we had more than 34 new cases in the last week. And as of yesterday, Heather had reported that we had 20 in two days over the weekend. So we, we were concerned what might be coming this week, and we wanted to make sure that we had the boards assembled. We had been discussing a joint meeting just to reconvene and get on the same page. We thought it was important to do this before Thanksgiving, and that's why we're here tonight. So Heather, if you want to take this opportunity now to kind of jump in and talk a little bit about the cases and what we're seeing and what we're concerned with and why we're here. Thanks.
Sure, thank you. So as John said, we've been doing this since March. We are currently at 305 cases overall since the beginning, with 34 people in isolation as of tonight. So as John said, we have seen a sharp increase as the fall curve has been going up with the new cases across the state. Since mid-October, there's been quite an increase in cases, varied ages, varied locations in town, but the majority have been caused by household exposures. So those are visits of your relatives or friends into your homes where you are being infected, Acton residents are being infected, or vice versa, where someone has gone to a family member outside of their home and the same thing is happening. This transmission is documented as very high throughout the state and also out the country, over the entire country. This has prompted the CDC and the Mass Department of Public Health to put guidance out about celebrating Thanksgiving to only your immediate family. As of, as October happened, we did see a sharp increase in children, most particularly in town. As of now, there are, one second, there are 33 cases that have been positive children in the school system. So that is definitely concerning as more and more cases are children, which we did not see in the spring and over the summer. But this weekend was very concerning, especially to me as a public health nurse. We had 20 new cases between Saturday and Sunday, and we've had 35 cases overall since the last Board of Health meeting last Monday, the 16th. On Friday, I did learn of two cases at the Life Care Center of Acton. Since then, over the weekend, there have been 11 cases. But as of Friday, because of those cases, the director reached out to the Department of Public Health and the epidemiologist assigned to that location from back at the beginning of this pandemic. All residents and 90% of staff were tested as of yesterday morning. They were finishing up the staff in the afternoon and today. Out of the testing so far, there were 11 residents overall and two staff members who tested positive. Cases for residents are located in the one unit that was not affected in the spring, which is definitely a concern since they obviously didn't deal with that piece. They are long-term care residents as opposed to rehabilitation residents that are there for a short term, so they live there full-time. So the Life Care has shut down visitors and admissions to the facility as of now. They won't be taking any more admissions from hospitals in the future, in the foreseen future. The cases that are positive are in isolation, and the contact cases are now on quarantine. So as of last spring, when all of this happened, DPH put out guidance for nursing homes, particularly long-term care, to have four different sections of their building, mainly placed into a COVID section for positive, isolated residents, a quarantine section for anyone who is a direct contact, and Life Care does that tracing within their buildings. Anyone that shares a bathroom is considered a close contact, as well as roommates, and then staff from there. Then there's also a step down from there for any residents who have recovered. And the fourth is residents that are not affected at all and have not had any incidents of COVID while they are there. So they've, you know, obviously put those metrics back into place and those parameters, they're using full PPE. As of last Friday, again, they were still on precautions when anyone had symptoms, but through the summer, they were still doing testing with their staff every two weeks and also with residents. And this is the first time that they've had a COVID-positive case within the building since June. So that worked, you know, is, is good on their end that they have kept that incidence down. Sorry, I hit my camera. So Acton, John, if you want to go to the next slide, I can talk about the coding. So the Mass Department of Public Health put out this dashboard a few months ago, based on the cases in each town. So there's different shading, gray, green, yellow, red. As of two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, the calculations changed a little bit. So this is brand new as of about two and a half to three weeks ago. Acton was in the green until last Thursday. So Acton falls under the population of 10,000 to 50,000 residents. And how this calculation works is, so now we are in the yellow. We have less than, equal to or greater than 10 cases per 100,000 residents, or equal to or greater than a 5% positivity rate. So as of last week, we were at a 1.99% positivity rate with 35 cases overall in 14 days. And then, so that is definitely higher than we were the week before, which, when we were shaded in green. So as, our biggest concern now is that Acton is going to move into the red area as cases increase, since we did have an increase of 35 cases over the last week alone, actually more than that probably now. But in the two weeks prior, we had 35 cases, which put us into the yellow. So our concern is that Acton will go into the red and we will have, you know, some bigger, bigger issues overall within the town.
Well, thank you. Perhaps at this time, it would be, it would be useful to ask if any members of either board have any questions for the two directors. Anyone wish to ask a question?
Yes, I'd like to ask about the children. What, what ages are we talking about in the cases in children?
Hi, Dr. Bill. So they're all ages from the preschool level through high school level.
Okay. Mr. Martin, I see you've unmuted.
No, no, I just was unmuted. Sorry, I didn't, no, I don't have a question. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Becetta, I see you're also unmuted.
I am. I just want to make sure I heard correctly, Heather. You mentioned that most, if not all, of the cases are not necessarily due to people becoming in contact with folks in the community, but more just from family members. Is that correct?
That's what we've been seeing, Joanne, yes, as people are having relatives or friends within their homes now that we are more inside, in the same, the opposite ways, people are going to visit their relatives and friends with, in, in a home outside of Acton. That's where we're seeing that transmission more so. And then from there, it's spreading within the household of the family members that are then placed on quarantine. So family dinner, grandma and grandpa coming over, going to someone's house for a birthday party, these are all the things that we're seeing as the biggest transmission.
Another question, if that's okay, Bill?
You get two.
Oh, okay.
Just kidding.
Is anybody hospitalized right now, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. We did have a, two or three people in the last month that were hospitalized briefly, no one that had made it into the ICU that I know about.
Okay, thank you.
That's encouraging. Mr. Snyder Grant, I see you're off mute.
Thank you. I think I missed the part where you talked about what recent positivity rates have been. Could you review that?
Sure. So the positivity rate as of last Thursday, that's calculated by the state, we're at 1.99% over the la, for the last two weeks. I would envision that that would increase, whether we get into the red or not with the new calculation. It, it does, it go, it, it has moved a little slower than Cheryl and I have expected it to move in the last few weeks since they did change that calculation.
Thanks. Mr. Benson?
Yes, Heather, if we do get moved into the red zone, would there be restrictions imposed upon us?
So I believe, and Cheryl can talk to the business side of the town, but as, as far as I know, if we do go into the red, there is not any concrete method that the schools have to close. In fact, a lot of schools in the Commonwealth, in towns that are already in the red, have stayed open. The school systems are looking and working out their own positivity rate based on what is happening within the school. So that's definitely something that Peter Light and his team are watching for if that needs to happen. Of note, and I apologize, I didn't mention this, the Acton Boxborough High School did close for two weeks. Few different factors, it's the increase in the number, number of students that have come back positive, but it's even more so the question of transmission in the schools, but also the schools being able to effectively handle the off-site and the remote learning. That's a big piece of this for them. There's at least, gosh, over 100, I think, right now, students on quarantine. So when they go remote for these students on quarantine and those that are on isolation, they also need to, you know, do their in-school teaching. So that becomes a challenge. So they had a different, you know, a few factors that, that shut the school down for two weeks. And then they'll reassess if things changed, as things changed in the next two weeks.
So if you don't mind, I can pop in about what going red would mean for us in regards to retail. So, so basically, right now, we're at phase three, step two. If we go into the red, we're going to be bumped back to phase three, step one. And that would mean, and a lot of these may or may not be impact to Acton, but that would mean that indoor theaters and performance venues would have to close. Outdoor gatherings in public venues and public settings would have to go down to 50 from 100. Outdoor theater and performance venues could still be open, but a 25, 25% capacity, but not more than 50 people. Roller skating rinks, trampoline parks, obstacle courses, laser tag and skate rooms would have to close. Arcades, indoor and outdoor recreation would have to go from 50% to 40% capacity. Driving schools, same thing, 50 to 40%. Gyms would have to go from 50 to 40. Libraries and museums would also have to go to 50 to 40. So musical performances are allowed indoors if we go red, but no wind or brass instruments or singing. And then the last one is our fitting rooms would, would have to be closed unless it's necessary. So that's pretty much what the impact would be for businesses when we go from yellow to red.
Okay, thank you.
See, Bill, I'd like to make a comment about the school's decision. We had discussed this at our last meeting with Peter Light. And the thing about being near the holidays, if, by adding a few more days to the holidays, you can interrupt transmission by closing onsite school for 14 days.
I think that's just exactly what they're doing.
Yes. And then, when school resumes, only those without symptoms are allowed to come back. And that can stop an outbreak, actually.
That would be awesome. Mr. Benson, I believe you had a third question.
Yeah, I mean, the, the high school, while it's closed for in-person learning, it will operate remotely, full remote for the two weeks that the in-person learning has been terminated.
Other questions from members of either board or comments? Okay, in that case, Cheryl, do you see anyone in the members of the public who wish to make a comment?
I do.
All right.
Let me just allow them to talk. Sorry, it's such a long list to scroll down to find them. All right, here we go. Sid Hert, I'm going to allow you to talk. So apparently, they cannot talk because they're using an older version of Zoom. So maybe we could ask them to put their comment in, or their question in chat?
Meanwhile, is there someone else that wishes to talk?
That's the only one I have right now.
Okay. Then in that case...
Here's the question.
Oh, just came up?
What about junior high school?
Ah, okay, so what, I don't know the answer to that. Does Heather or Cheryl, do either of you know?
The, the only school that closed for two weeks was a high school, and that was because of a possible transmission in the school, within the school. But the junior high is still open.
Okay.
I do have, I do have one more question from the audience, if you want to take that.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Call in user number one, I'm going to allow you to talk, but you need to identify your name and your address, please. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Kara from West Acton. Just a question. And so my question is about supermarkets. And in the height of the last spike, if that was what we would call it, when we were doing as much lockdown as we did, the markets only had every other cashier station open. And now it's every station, and they want you to stand behind the glass, but the problem is that, you know, one foot behind you is the other cashier who's breathing, huh? So I'm uncomfortable being in the, that close to the cashier. I'd rather stand back in the aisle. And so, but in one person said, well, if they don't have all the cashiers open, then we'll be standing in line longer. So I'd like to just find out what the experts think about that, because it was a little, it's uncomfortable for me to stand so close to the cashiers, even though they do have masks on, they're standing in the same spot for a long time. So I don't know if there's like a virus cloud around them or what, but I would like very much to find out what they, you all think. Thank you.
Very good. Is anyone, is anyone able to formulate a response? I mean, I'm afraid I don't know the situation well enough to make an informed response.
So I can, I can speak to that. So we did send out guidance to the grocery stores and all the retail stores today. They should be six feet apart. They should be socially distancing. So, you know, we can take care of that on our end. If you want to offline, tell me which facility you're referring to, you can send me an email and I'll take care of that for you tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Well, if that's, if that's the summary of the comments from folks, I believe it would be time to move on to recommendations from staff as to what actions we should, concrete actions that we could take to try to slow things down and, and get hopefully a better outcome. I'm not sure, John, were you going to be presenting those?
Yeah, thank you. So I think we, you know, and we have a daily, or I guess a weekly, and it's become more frequent, internal call to make sure that we're all on track with all the different departments involved, public safety, public health. And over the weekend and today, we came up with a few things that we know that we want to do right now, as we, as we mentioned, as we head towards the red designation. A few of those, let me just bring up my slideshow again, yeah. Everyone, as a programming note, we have 162 people watching in addition to panelists. So thank you all for checking this out. So what we're looking to do immediately is do a townwide phone call. In the spring, we did at least one of these, and we, I think we do a really, really good job, we communicate with the public through social media and all kinds of different ways, but there are some people that just don't get the messages. So the phone call, I think, would help just reinforce our messaging. So we're going to work on putting one out this week before Thanksgiving. So any input tonight from board members would be helpful. We're also going to work on a townwide mailing. This is something that nursing and other folks have been working on. I think we're going to try to accelerate that to get that out next week. We're doing some operational changes. We're transitioning to appointment only. Uh, we're doing some operational changes. Uh, we're transitioning to appointment only. Uh, we had been running a pretty successful window service for walk-up. Uh, but as it gets colder, um, it's the, and for other reasons, we're gonna encourage people to make appointments to, to meet with our staff um, at the windows. And we're gonna push telecommuning again. Uh, we had a lot of people leave the workplace in March. Uh, they've come back a little bit. And we're gonna send some people back home and, and they're fully set up to work now, so um, we're gonna lean in that direction. We're also gonna relocate staff as much as we can, move them around in, in buildings that are underutilized or other spaces available. Uh, we're also gonna do less in-person inspections. Um, Cheryl, do you wanna just mention that point briefly on what, what we're talking about there?
Yeah, so um, back when this pandemic hit, we um, suspended some of the inspections and then we um, started, you know, cause we all have a job to do other than COVID, so we um, transitioned into working with our establishments and doing those inspections virtually. Um, you know, especially it works well for the health um, inspections. Um, they, we used a FaceTime or Zoom, whatever um, um, technology that the business had. But it worked really well and it's still got our eyes in the establishments to make sure that they're in compliance. So um, we, we will be um, revert, um, reverting back to that um, now. We, you know, we think, we feel it's important to um, keep our, our staff um, as safe as possible.
And along those lines, with, with our first responders, we're continuing to fit them out with PPE, and if there's any needs, we, we try to continue to address them. Uh, the supply, I think, is, is not as strained as it was uh, at the beginning. Uh, but we're still uh, always looking to add to that to make sure we're, we're have enough to go around. Some other items that uh, we're gonna look at in terms of out there in the community, uh, we know that uh, people, some people are still not getting the hang of the sign, I mean, of the mask uh, requirement. And so we've, uh, we've come up with some signage that we're gonna be rolling out next week at the rail trails and some other uh, popular locations. With the idea being that, yes, they've all know that they're supposed to be wearing a mask, but having these signs will be one more reason for them to um, make sure that they do. Uh, and we hope that will continue to allow those uh, areas to remain open and, and uh, be, continue to be excellent opportunities for residents to get fresh air, but I'll make sure that they're reminded to do so safely. Uh, we wanted to talk to the boards tonight about the library service. Um, library is a big, important uh, program that we provide here. It's a valuable community service and people really were missing getting into that building and browsing for a long time. Uh, and we just recently started letting small groups, I think less than twelve at a time enter the library, uh, Memorial Library to look at books and today was supposed to be another day for that, and we asked them to just hold on until we had a meeting tonight to make sure that that there was a level of comfort with continuing that uh, right now. So I'm looking for some feedback on that tonight. Also, the skate park, uh, we had to close that for a week or so, a few weeks ago, cause it was just a compliance problem with masks. I think that uh, once the weather clears, if there's still a compliance issue, uh, compliance problem, we would probably look to close that as well. Um, again, and then we don't want to, but we're gonna continue further uh, issues that may require changes if, if mask compliance continues to be an issue. Uh, we think that uh, this signage and, and community uh, people's stepping up will allow us to not have to take those steps, or recommend those steps, but we're gonna continue to watch that very closely because it is a, a real concern. Um, so those are the items that we were looking for. Uh, any feedback from the board tonight? There is, I, I just noticed there's some people who are asking about the schools. There is not, um, we, we work with the school district every day. Uh, Cheryl and Heather meet with them on, on multiple times a day, probably, on, on the phone. So we're in close coordination, but in terms of this meeting tonight, uh, they're not in, uh, as part of this meeting, this is just meant to be for us. And if there's any specific district questions, I would direct them to the district. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you. Um, and thank you. I think those are, are uh, good uh, concrete steps and, but I'd ask if there are comments or questions from members of the board? Hi, Ms., Ms. Gardner.
Yeah, um, it's my understanding that the public access to the library is by appointment only. And it's a, and it's a limited number of people in a thirty-minute period.
That's correct.
But we would still con- have pickup, right?
So we, we, uh, I think in the summer, we started curbside pickup, which uh, people were allowed to uh, select some uh, materials and then library staff would package them and leave them outside. And that's continuing, and it has continued, but uh, within the last month, we started having these um, sort of browsing appointments for, you're right, up to fifteen people for a half-hour period. And they've been very successful. There was, I think there was seventy-plus people that were scheduled to do it today, but uh, we, we just uh, postponed that until we had a conversation tonight. And if there's a lot of comfort with that continuing, we will, and if we wanna take a step back, uh, we can uh, do that as well.
Okay. Is that it? Dr. Taylor?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Two things. One is the red and yellow is somewhat arbitrary. And any town that has a nursing home or assisted living is more vulnerable to have more cases just because of the congregant setting up people at risk. Uh, and just as Heather said, you know, they've got eleven cases in life care, and probably before it's over, they'll have more than that. So that, that was one point. The, the other point, the highest risk of contagion is within the household. So the only way to prevent that is what's called isolation. That means the person that's positive and ill should be staying in a separate bedroom and not coming out or sharing meals with, with the rest of the family. And this is very hard to comply with. Um, and I, I'm sure that the nurses have explained that, be- because it's a major inconvenience for the family. And people feel guilty if they're sort of avoiding their family for ten to twelve days in isolation. So.
I believe that in some cases, and for some residents in town, um, that's portion of them anyway, it's a physical impossibility.
It is, it can be, it can be. But I, I still think if that's the primary mode of transmission, I, I think the target is the household. But, you know, a town mailing is great, but, but I think specifically detailed instructions to the household and assistance in how they can manage isolation from the others. And this can be serious because children can transmit to someone who's older, a grandmother perhaps, uh, with higher risks. So it is important to try to get a handle on that if possible.
Good point. Thank you, Dr. Bill. Mr. Martin?
Uh, yes, um, so I, uh, John, I think those recommendations on the town side are, are, are good, but uh, like Dr. Bill, I would like to see some recommendations in the contact if we're gonna do a call or um, yeah, and or a, 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 a mailing. Um, you know, specifically, I don't know, I haven't been at the last few, well, Board of Health meetings, but I, I presume that uh, the town recommendations do not go beyond the state recommendations. And maybe, maybe we can't. Uh, I, I don't know, but it, the, for example, the state of Vermont uh, recommends, um, I don't think it's an absolute requirement, but it, they recommend no mixed households at Thanksgiving except a single person joining a group. Um, uh, otherwise, they recommend no, no mixed households at all. Um, I'm wondering if the Board of Health has done something like that, or whether you guys would be interested in doing something like that and having it included in the mailing and phone call.
Okay, thank you. I, I think actually that's, uh, well, Cheryl and Heather would be the experts, but I believe that's pretty close to the state's guidelines. Um, which we could certainly emphasize, uh, because I believe that we're, we're aligned with the state's guidance in that area. So I apologize. Dr. Jacoby, I think you uh, look like you wish to make a comment.
Yeah, I just had a comment for John. When you do hang up these signs around town, I would suggest that you have a picture on it of a person actually wearing a mask, because I don't think a lot of people realize the difference between a mask and a bandana. I mean, I see people all the time, delivery people, um, people out, walking people in the street. They see you coming and they pull up a bandana. Well, a bandana has maybe ten percent of the um, protection than an actual mask does. So I think we need to make a distinction of what a real mask is all about.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jacoby. Um, Mr. Benson, I see you're unmuted. Do you wish to make a comment, or are you just unmuted?
Right, it looks like unmuted. Um, I, 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 I would agree that the um, the in-person appointments at the library, even in small groups, uh, we should step that back for the time being, but certainly continue the, the uh, curbside services. Book service, pickup services.
Okay, well, thank you. So traditionally, the, the way we've um, we've approached these, since these are actions that the town staff can take on their own, um, we've handled this as sort of a, uh, you know, a board endorsement or agreement, at least uh, for the, the Board of Health perspective. But prior to that, we usually um, see if anyone in the public wishes to provide some additional information that we may not have considered. Um, so at this time, Cheryl, do you see anyone that wishes to make a comment?
Yeah. Christine Brown, I'm gonna allow you to talk. Um, please state your name and your address. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, my name is actually Linda Viera, sorry for the wrong thing. Um, one in Graydell Way. And my question is, is there any coordination with the surrounding towns um, for their Board of Health, since Acton does not live in a bubble and we uh, people who work in Acton may work in other towns and vice versa.
Uh, so obviously Cheryl and John can give you a much more detailed answer, but I can tell you, yes. Um, I occasionally also, you know, uh, uh, have conversations with my counterparts in, in other towns, um, and share experiences, and I'm, I believe that's true for the staff, but I'll, I'll let them speak for themselves.
Uh, yeah, thank you. That's a great question. That's something that I think we've been doing a lot of in this last eight months. Uh, we have a bi-weekly call with our partners in Boxborough uh, to talk about everything related to the pandemic. Uh, we also have regular couples with the Lieutenant Governor's Office and all the managers across the Commonwealth. And um, just this weekend and, and several other times, we've had calls with mayors and managers throughout the region. And the idea being that we wanna make sure that measures that are in, in each community um, are not done in isol- isolation necessarily, and to make sure that we have uh, the best practices uh, that everyone's doing, and everyone is aware of it. So, and I know that um, Cheryl is in, in communication with our neighbors as well, and Heather is, I believe.
Well, thank you. Cheryl, any other comments?
I do, I have two more. Uh, Jennifer Thomas, I'm gonna allow you to talk. Please state your name and address. Jennifer, you just need to unmute yourself.
We can see you on the screen, but we can't hear you, I'm afraid. I think you uh, might have to mute on. Um, if you're on Zoom, just press the spacebar. That should unmute you. Just press and hold it. Well, unfortunately, I think we may have to move to the next person.
Yeah, so Jennifer, if you wanna put your question in chat. Um, so I do have one more, Vandana. Uh, I'm gonna allow you to talk. Please state your full name and your address.
Hello, my name is Vandana. I'm fif- on fifteen Canterbury, Fifth Road, in Acton. Um, I think a year ago, I was, I came to know that uh, there are people who are older and feel isolated and feel depressed, and I was wondering when we're talking about isolation due to COVID. Um, it was lingering on my mind that fellow residents like us should call and reach out to people who are feeling alone at this time. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion. Mr. Benson?
Yeah, um, ma'am, um, Sharon Maccherio, who's our director of our senior center, has maintained since last March, an extensive list of senior contacts. Uh, people who wish to be called either, they once a week, twice a week. Others on the list say, we'll call, we'll let you know when we, when we need help. But to the community at large, I think it's imperative that we in our own neighborhoods, um, just watch out for our senior neighbors and, you know, check in with them, particularly those seniors, um, you know, who live alone.
Hey, I'll call the town if um, any help is needed uh, from my end, but uh, in the neighborhood I live, I don't see any seniors that I am aware of. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good comment. Cheryl, uh, anyone else?
No, um, I don't have anybody else. Um, I, I just did wanna mention that the townwide mailing that John talked about, we do address isolation in that letter, that, and that will be sent to all the, the residents, so just wanted to point that out as well. But, and that's all I have, Bill.
Thank you, Cheryl. So, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Just had a question, um, as the town considers what to do in the library. What I'm hearing is that the, the primary problem with transmission is in homes, so I'm thinking the library is not an issue, so my first reaction is to, is to keep those, keep those hours available. But I'm thinking that the Board of Health has probably had a, um, or staff have had more of a discussion about, for example, um, how the, how the ventilation is in the library and whether you, you know, have, whether you feel okay about, um, you know, the safety of, of the numbers of people that are in there at the time.
Okay, good comment. Well, that uh, leads into what I was gonna suggest is the next step, which is
Dean has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Dean, or Mr. Charter, good evening.
Um, I, I would like to uh, weigh in as well with this, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant. I, I agree, since it seems that the uh, transmission is primarily in the homes. Um, having folks be able to use the library on such a limited basis could be a good idea. And I believe that there have been some substantial upgrades done on the HVAC systems of the Memorial Library recently. So I, I hope that uh, we could keep at least a very limited use of that building open for the public. I think that, you know, it certainly uh, will help people a lot with, with isolation, um, you know, and leave something other than just the transfer station as the only social activity for seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Charter. Um, so actually, then that makes an excellent question, uh, you know, Cheryl or, or John. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss one? Oh, Mr. Snyder Grant.
No, I'm also that thing.
Oh, okay.
Bill?
Yes, Mr. Benson?
Bill?
Martin?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at who's um, who's unmuted and I, I missed you. Mr. Connaughtby?
No problem. Can we get back, uh, we were talking about the number of cases in the community transmission, but we didn't talk about it with the contact tracing was finding how the initial cases were being contracted, cause I think that has a big impact on how it would go forward. Maybe, uh, Heather, could you give us a little bit of information on that? What you're seeing, is possibly the initial cases are being contracted? And then obviously, you talked about the community spread.
Remark, um, and I did see a question from someone about the um, household spread. Um, so the majority of the new cases are from, um, are in a household. Um, that has been with either um, someone outside of their own household um, or at um, work in close proximity, but more so uh, by visiting friends or family in a separate household or having them into their homes. I did see a question in the chat about that particularly, um, how many cases are um, have been within the same family. I can't give you a definite number over this, you know, last month and a half, uh, but just in the past week, um, there have been, um, as an example, let me go with that. Um, s- you know, over the weekend, we had ten new cases in households. Um, seven of those, uh, seven were separate houses. It was only one um, that had multiple family members. When we do the contact tracing in the households, um, the person who is placed on isolation, as Dr. Bill talked about, um, is um, is duck, teaching is done about isolating to one bedroom, one bathroom if they can. Um, most people are able to do that, um, even in some of the apartments where uh, a bedroom and um, a bedroom will be utilized, uh, someone else in the house who is not positive will make the meals and bring the food to the person who's in isolation. Um, of course, if there's only one bathroom, that increases the amount of sanitization. Um, but then as we have gotten more inside in the last few months, um, there, the incidence of spread within the household definitely increases. Um, if this is someone that's identified as a parent or a student, um, the person on isolation um, is then the contact tracing is every person they have been in close contact with forty-eight hours before their symptoms started or by their test date. And, and all of those folks are then placed on quarantine, uh, that includes all family members. And if there are other children in the home, they do not go to school, um, and adults do not go to work. Um, there are a few exceptions for uh, critical infrastructure such as fire and police. As long as those folks are not symptomatic, um, they can go to work, of course, using um, the PPE as appropriate.
Sorry about that. Uh, my questions also following up on that is some of the information going out, we should probably talk a little bit about what a close contact is and some of the travel guidelines and restrictions, particularly after the holidays, to reinforce those.
Okay, good comment.
And if you don't mind, I'd just like to make one um, comment about that as well. So, one of the, the issues that we're having, um, is you know, compliance with, with these guidelines and, um, to me, it seems like we need to do some more messaging, which is what we're suggesting, um, but also I, I feel like we need to lead by example. So for that reason, um, it's, it's my recommendation that, you know, we do stop the in-person library. It's just something that, um, I, I feel really strongly about because it's um, it's, it's bad out there and it is gonna get worse and, and we're trying the best we can and it's getting really difficult. So, I, I just want to point that out. And um, Bill, I do have, um, State Rep Tammy Gouvea, um, is looking to speak if you wanted to.
Sure.
Okay, State Rep, you should be allowed to talk.
Great. Well, first of all, I just want to thank uh, both boards for convening this meeting. I think by the sheer number of people who are here, um, you're getting the sense of obviously how this important, how important this is to our community. So just want to thank you, um, for all of your efforts and all of the reporting that you've done here. I have two questions. Um, my first actually came from, uh, Heather, you, you mentioned that some of the uh, contact tracing indicated that uh, primary exposure was within a place of employment. I'm just wondering if you can give us a sense of, is that happening within Acton, outside of Acton, are there specific industries? Um, I'll be quite transparent here in that I continue to be extremely concerned about indoor dining and certain other uh, things that continue to be open. So just wondering, you know, do you have a sense of what kinds of work people were engaged in that uh, contributed to their exposure? And then I do have a second um, question.
Sure, thank you. Um, the only exposure from a particular business uh, type is healthcare. Um, that is, I have seen, um, the majority of, um, is people that are working in a hospital. You know, nursing home, rehab, doctor's office, dentist's office, that there have been an exposed, they have been exposed and then uh, the contacts, um, you know, are traced from there.
Great, thank you so much, really. I appreciate that. And then my second question just has to do with, um, you know, this sense, uh, you know, we're kind of looking to see if there's a potential um, uh, spread or uh, situation within the schools and just wondering if you can talk a little bit for all the people who are listening, what the partship between the Board of Health or the Health Department is and Select Board. Particularly when it comes to contact tracing, I know it's probably a little bit dicey, given that, you know, there are students who are in classrooms and some are remote and some are hybrid, and so I'm sure there's, you know, multiple layers to it, but just wondering if you can give us a sense, and I know the, the, you know, school committee or the, and, you know, no one from the schools are, is here on this particular meeting, but just wondering if you can help us understand a little bit what that looks like. And thank you again for everything, really appreciate it.
Sure, that's a good question. So Cheryl and I, um, meet weekly with the Acton Box for a school district to talk about what the metrics are at and um, you know, any concerns, um, suggestions, you know, things like that. Um, but I and Cheryl also, um, talk to the school nurses, um, and the administration daily, sometimes more than once a day, um, based on what the new positive cases are. Um, so what happens is, uh, when I get a positive student or the parent of a student and find out there are, um, Acton Box Row Regional School District kids in the home, I will contact the school. Um, if it's a positive student, the school then in turn uh, does the contact tracing because I don't have access to their seating charts, um, in the classrooms, um, the busing charts, all of those things. So they do the contact tracing and they're using, um, a six-foot diameter um, of, of radius around the person who's, who's a positive case. Um, so they are definitely erring on the side of caution. Um, you know, the social distancing is six feet or greater. Uh, the desks are placed at six feet, so anyone in that six-foot radius is identified as a close contact and is placed on quarantine. So once the administration does that, um, and everyone, you know, they look at the attendance to make sure all of these kids were actually in school on the exposure day, um, from there, they send that to us. Um, the school nurses are doing a fantastic job, as well as the administration identifying all these, um, all these kids. What happens then is, um, the school nurses then call every family. They go through the guidance, um, for isolation, um, quarant- if, if, excuse me, not isolation, for quarantine, for a contact case. Um, they go through all the guidance, they talk about ways to stop the spread in the house. Um, they let them know that we'll be reaching out as a Board of Health. They actually, in their letter to families who are identified, they will als- they also include the quarantine guidance through the Mass Department of Public Health. Um, so they're really doing a fantastic job with that first phone call, because that's the most important phone call. Um, they talk about, um, based on the last exposure, how long the quarantine goes through, testing, what days you should get tested based on the public health, um, uh, data that is out there. Um, a- and so forth. So they're really doing, um, a huge amount of work. Um, and then, you know, tossing the ball to us to follow up and, and follow these families over a fourteen-day period, um, which we do do. Um, and then, of course, if anyone from, um, you know, whether it's the family of the positive case or any of the contacts do, um, transition to a positive case themselves, then we start the process again. Um, we do the teaching for isolation, we do the teaching for quarantine and, and do further contact tracing. So there is, uh, quite an extensive, um, process and discussions that go on between um, Cheryl, myself, and the administration and nurses over at all of the schools in Acton.
Thank you. Now, Heather. Okay, so, uh, it sounds like there was one item that maybe requires a little uh, board discussion, which has to do with the uh, scaling back of the services at the library. And uh, whether or not we wish to proceed. I heard Cheryl say that she really thinks it's, um, uh, you know, it would be an important uh, step. But Cheryl can ask, or Heather, or John, do you have any specifics, like, um, you know, the uh, any risk factors that, that this particularly presents?
Oh, sorry. The brief overview is that the, it's a, it's an in- it's an innovative program. I think it was a great idea to, uh, what they basically do is they allow people to sign up to be part of a thirty-minute block. And um, and there's up to, I believe, up to fifteen people at a time that can participate in the fifteen, uh, thirty-minute block of browsing. And they're booked in half-hour windows, so that, let's say, the first one's at nine AM. They let up to fifteen people into the building for that half hour, and they'll clear out before nine-thirty. And in the next half hour, they'll, they'll let another up to fifteen people in that have already made an appointment to do so. Um, the risks, uh, I guess, public health, and talk more about the risks, but generally from my perspective, is the staff that we have, uh, operating in there while that's going on, uh, in addition to any, um, any residents that may not, you know, the general risk of, of being out and about in a population. Is there any more specific risks that we're aware of?
Uh, you assume you were asking like other Cheryl?
Yes.
Well, neither one of them is adding to it, so I think, I think that's probably a good summary. Um, maybe it would be appropriate to ask, uh, members of the Board of Health, how do you, uh, what are your thoughts on that topic? Anyone wish to comment? Not seeing anyone, uh, anyone commenting. I think we've, we've heard from the Select Board, but if other selectmen wish to add to their previous comments, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I, I, I think it is a, a good time to, to, uh, take a pause on, um, the, the browsing program at the library. Um, I, I, I think with the, um, the, the example of high school is set by taking the, the, the two-week break there uh, in case there is increased transmission, um, during the, uh, Thanksgiving holiday, which is, seems likely. Then, um, that would break any, you know, the, the cycle of transmission after that, so if we took, you know, went for two weeks after Thanksgiving or something like that, suspended the program, that, that seems to me to make sense.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other members of the Select Board wish to make comments? So at this point, and Ms. Paceta, I think I saw you unmute briefly, uh, and I apologize if I missed you. Did you have a comment?
Okay. Yeah, um, I, I, I think, um, I agree with what David said and I want to support, you know, Cheryl's effort and you know, setting an example and, um, you know, it, it's a temporary halving of the program, I think might be prudent at this time, not just for, um, the public safety, but also for the library staff as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Paceta. Um, at this point then, I think perhaps, uh, what we, uh, I'd suggest is members of the Board of Health, are we willing to endorse the town's recommendations? Um, but this is not necessarily a vote, so I'll try to do it in the negative. Is there any Board of Health member who disagrees with the town's recommendations? Please, uh, speak up. I don't see any member that has disagreed, so I'm going to take that as endorsement. Um, and if I'm wrong, this would be the opportunity to tell me I'm wrong. Okay, Mr. Benson, would you mind pulling your board?
Same, um, or we, we, it's a somewhat, somewhat different approach. Um, uh, by a show of thumbs up, who would support uh, John's, uh, recommendation to put a temporary, uh, pause in the, in the browse program?
Well, it's, it, it's not only that, right, John? It's, it's, uh, a, all the recommendations that he showed on those several slides. Which, which is, uh, uh, cut back on in, in, in-person town hall uh, 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 events, do remote inspections. I mean, I don't remember the whole list, uh, but that, that John.
Well, could we, could we just do the library first, because I think that was the one he was most seeking a and then we, if you wanted, we can go over the others, but the, I think we'd all be behind the, the signage and the ways, but I think to, to track, uh, Bill's suggestion, um, wh- what is our opinion on the, uh, curtailing the in-person library um, program? So the, the question I had to the group was how many would be in favor of adopting John's recommendation to do so?
John, do we have to take a formal vote?
No, thi- thi- this is, this is like our, our thumb, you know, just a consensus.
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, those who would oppose the recommend, John's recommendation? Okay, so it's three to nothing with two abstentions, it looks like.
Well, we can, we, we can't count like that without a roll call.
Okay, I just recorded what the consensus is, okay?
Uh, okay, well, thank you. I think then, uh, I, both boards have, um, said that they agree with the town's recommendations. Again, if I'm misstating anyone's opinion, this would be a great opportunity to, to say so. But, um, Mr. Martin?
I just wanted to confirm, uh, with, uh, uh, town manager, uh, that the, uh, staff has uh, authority to make these changes on their own. You're just looking for, uh, you know, advice and consent, if you will, from the boards here.
Really, just, um, confirmation that you're comfortable with the direction that we're headed. And, uh, no, I, I don't think a formal vote is required, but I appreciate the input and I, I think I have a sense of both bodies, uh, prepared tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So, uh, that was the, um, I'll say the first two topics for tonight's agenda. The remainder of the meeting, if people, um, are willing to invest a little more time. Um, I suggested some topics to Cheryl. I don't know if you've prepared anything to be able to talk to them, but there are, uh, other related issues to the pandemic that I think would be useful to just discuss. One, for example, is vaccinations. We, um, anticipate that they may become available soon and how would we might approach, uh, vaccinations in town? We obviously don't know what that program will look like nationwide, but we do have a lot of experience in doing vaccinations in different settings. And, um, perhaps we could give you a little sense of what we might be doing to, uh, prepare for that. That's just an example. Cheryl, was there others, I think, that we were looking to bring up? I don't know if we'd like to lead with vaccinations or not.
Um, that, I thought that was all I had, Bill, um, vaccinations. I mean, we can speak to what we've done previously. We um, were fortunate that we did have, um, a trial drive-through clinic, um, for, um, vaccinations and we actually conducted that similar to the way we do Hazardous Ways Day, where the people came around the DPW building, uh, stayed in their vehicles and go through the DPW building to obtain their shots. Now, you know, given that this is a pandemic, is a, is even though the building is more open, is that the best base, um, we may have to reexamine where we do that. Um, you know, and, and we have some thoughts on that. Um, it's looking, from what I've seen, um, that the shots won't be readily available to the Boards of Health till the third or the fourth quarter, um, of next year. Um, I'm hoping that it's sooner than that, but, um, if not, um, I feel we have a really active um, medical reserve corps. Um, you know, we have a lot of volunteers that we can utilize. The nurses at the schools helped us with the flu, um, clinic that we had these past couple of weeks, um, uh, two weeks ago. And, uh, you know, then we have the nursing service and our staff, so I feel really prepared, uh, with people to be able to effectively offer um, the, a vaccination when it becomes available to us. It does need, um, you know, some thinking about a new location possibly, um, but I'm open to, um, any advice on that.
Okay, um, Heather, might you, uh, I know we had looked at various things with vaccines. I apologize. I thought I had, um, sent you folks an email and maybe I, uh, forgot to hit the send button. But, uh, for instance, you know, are, are we looking at potentially being a, a local distribution point for vaccines? Because I know that they have some unusual storage requirements. And is that, um, something that we would be prepared for? Are we going to have to look at a different model?
Bill, I, I think it's too presentalist to make any kind of decision at this point. Uh, the Pfizer vaccine is, is bundled at five hundred doses. That means when you open it, you have to have five hundred people to immunize. And it does have to be kept at minus one hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Um, and most hospitals don't have that capacity to keep it. So, that, you know, I think whatever happens, and we don't know about cost. So, I, I think anything we say tonight is just conjecture.
Agreed. I, I understand it's conjecture. Agreed. I, I understand it's conjecture, but at, at some point, it's, um, I guess maybe I'm a planner at heart. And I like to look at what might be coming down the road and then making sure that we can, uh, we can address it. So that's all, what I was just trying to do is open the discussion. So for example, it might mean that the town might need to procure some. Some equipment for either storage or, um, loading massive doses, like you say, when you open, uh, the pack of five hundred. Uh, well, perhaps then we should, uh, we should move on to a different subject, but unless, uh, Heather or Cheryl, you'd like to add any comments? Okay, uh, uh, just working from memory, I think one of the things we're looking at was, um. The availability of personal protective equipment and are we, uh, procuring it both for. The health department staff and the nursing staff or other town departments as well. Um, and Heather, I think you had said that it's, the state is doing a pretty good job of making it available, but. I understand that supplies might be tightening a little bit.
So we haven't seen any issue with the supply demand, uh, like we did in the spring. Um, we've been getting that. The assistant town manager has been working directly with MEMA. To get enough supply for, um, the fire and police as well as, um, our department and the health division. Who are doing inspections. I don't know if anyone else, John or Cheryl, has any comment? No, you summed that up well.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Um, just again, I think one of the other topics was mask wearing. It's probably the, I think Cheryl would say, the biggest source of complaints that the health department receives from the town. Um, either people in public not wearing masks or in various establishments, uh, not being masked or. Wearing the masks, uh, inappropriately. And one of the, uh, the things of the governor's order about wearing masks at all times in public is it leaves the enforcement. Up to the local communities. Um, so the board has discussed what we think the enforcement should look like. And, um, our, our consensus opinion was that, you know, we should work toward education and persuasion. And explain to people why the, you know, it's protective of their own health as well as the health of their neighbors and, and family. And, uh, hopefully, you know, get their, uh, get their buy-in to, uh, put on the masks and use it appropriately. Uh, and in cases where we have, uh, folks who just absolutely refuse, if they don't fall into one of the exception categories. Then we'd look at potentially, um, you know, providing, uh, some enforcement along the lines of, uh, small fines. And to hopefully, uh, uh, reinforce the fact that it's, it's a requirement, not a suggestion. Are there other, uh, topics members of the, um, the health board wish to bring up?
I'm good. Um, you know, I, I do believe that this, um, push that we're going to do with the, her messaging. Hopefully it would be helpful and hopefully people will understand, uh, a bit more than they already, um, do. Um, it's, it's, it, like I said before, it's a frustrating, um, you know, uh, it's, it's frustrating. To get people to comply, um, you know, and I, I feel like if we do a good push with the messaging, maybe that'll be helpful. So I'm looking forward to that.
The only thing I'd like to say, Bill, to, um, people that are listening, as Cheryl said about the mask wearing, so important, but. Um, Thanksgiving, you know, I know this is a really hard time for people. I know that you want to see your families. I want to see my family and I'm not. Um, because we have people that are at risk. Having your Thanksgiving for your immediate family is the CDC and the Mass Department of Public Health recommendation. Uh, limiting to ten people indoors, twenty-five people outdoors, if you're having, uh, people into your home. There are recommendations, if you go to the Mass Department of Public Health, um, the mdph.gov and the CDC. Uh, dot gov websites, um, those are on there. There's, if you just type in Thanksgiving, it'll give all the recommendations for safer. Um, celebrations and the main thing they're talking about is to only celebrate with your immediate household members. Um, so there are recommendations if you are having folks into your house or you are going to someone else's house. Um, you know, Cheryl and I have been concerned about this. We've been talking about it for weeks. Um, you know, I, I feel like, uh, as we get into next week and the following week, um, the numbers. Through the state, um, and potentially in Acton will, um, go higher than they are now. Um, at a quicker level as people are going out and doing their celebration for Thanksgiving. Um, and I understand it's hard and, you know, everybody wants to have that peace, but this is not been a normal year. Um, and I just, you know, I, I hope people make the right choice, um, and, and are, are, and are cautious if they are seeing other people. Because as Cheryl said to me this morning, did you see the lines at Logan? You know, that, that's a big concern, um, all of those folks that are actually getting on planes, trains. Um, and potentially traveling in an automobile with people that aren't in their immediate household. So I just really would like to caution people about that, um, as we get closer to Thursday.
Okay, well, good point. I think actually, um, last week, uh, Mr. Peter Light, um, from the schools mentioned that they saw a surge right after Halloween. So probably a similar effect. Um, all right, well, if that's the, the case, uh, Cheryl, just ask, are there any other comments or questions for you to board from members of the public?
I do have a couple of hands raised, if you'd like, uh, me to call on them.
Uh, Cheryl, oh, I see Mr. Snyder Grant just also wishes to make a comment, so appreciate.
Um, so one of the things I saw in the chat, uh, a couple of times, was wondering if the town has resources, if. Uh, when you contact families and you require isolation. Um, and they are, you know, in a, you know, in a, in a, you know, one bedroom situation where they can't do that. Are there resources for, um, providing some isolation for people in, in other facilities, hotels or whatever? Um, so that was one question I, I was curious about, because I, I knew I did not know the answer to that.
Uh, we haven't made specific arrangements for, uh, anyone in particular, but I would highly encourage anyone that is faced with. In that situation to contact our team, uh, to go Laura Ducharme. If there's an issue with housing or temporary housing or that nature, uh. A great resource that can help find, uh, address that, uh, she can be reached through the hotline nine seven eight nine two nine. Six six zero zero.
Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to say was that, um, my abstention on the recommendations was only because I don't feel like I have the expertise. To make a recommendation. I, I just wanted to reinforce what other people said. My gratitude at both the dedication and the skill of, uh, of the staff and, and dealing with all these issues and, and my, my deep appreciation.
Well, thank you. We, uh, we, uh, frequently are grateful for the, the talented staff we have. Um, okay, uh, Cheryl, the, uh, people in the public who wish to comment, please. So, offer them an opportunity.
Jason Cole, I allowed you to talk. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you very much, Jason Cole, sixty-three in the Chover Road, and I have a parent of two students in the district. I was curious, given some of the questions asked tonight, was the administration of the ABRSD invited to this call? And/or what was their reaction to the declaration of an emergency meeting of these boards tonight? And I have a follow-up request, please.
Uh, well, I can answer part of that. Um, so we actually met last week with, uh. The superintendent of schools and talked about the, um, health programs in the schools and the, the protocol and how they would react to. Uh, changing situations, so, uh, and as I believe one of the. Answer to a previous question is there's at least weekly, but probably almost daily contact between the health. Health department and the, um, and the schools, um, and both at the administrative level and, and at the nursing level.
I appreciate, I appreciate all the communication between the district and the town that was referenced both in your answer and previously in this call. But would you please ensure that representation of the ABRSD be on all future emergency calls?
Um, okay, well, I, I appreciate the suggestion, sir. Um, I was gonna say, they, it was not, um. Um, an oversight that they were not asked to be on the call. It was, we felt that we were, um, up to date with them and it wasn't. Given that it was an emergency, it wasn't fair to ask them to have to, uh, to join. So, you might disagree with that decision, but it was made on purpose and not by accident. Hi, Mr. Benson?
Yeah, um, Ja- Jason, uh, to follow up, um, uh, Peter Light sent out an extensive communication. To all AB families and the extended community at, uh, Friday night about six o'clock, which. Expressed his, um, concerns and the actions, uh, that he was taking. With, with respect to the high school. And, uh, he addressed many of the concerns that we're talking about from a, uh, uh, you know, from a school perspective and that.
And, and I did indeed read that. What was that before or after the extra twenty cases that were called over this weekend?
That was, yeah, that was Friday. Yeah, he, he also addressed this to him. Yeah.
It was an emergency to you. It should also, the school should be invited in as well.
Okay.
Mr. Rajarati?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I did talk to Peter Light this afternoon around two thirty or so and told him about the, the meeting and. Uh, he encouraged, he re-forwarded me the memo that he shared with the Board of Health last week. And he said that all the data and analysis that they presented at that last meeting is still their recommendations and, and representative of their concerns. With regards to the data and the metrics that they're following very closely.
And I have Marie Alteri from the schools with her hand raised, if you'd like me to call on her next.
That would make sense. Thank you, Cheryl.
She's allowed to talk, Marie.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Um, Marie Alteri, five Berry Lane, Acton, um, also the deputy superintendent of schools. Um, I've been on the call since seven fifteen. I missed the first few minutes, but, um. The, the only thing I think I heard that we need to comment on is, um, RJ Gray Junior High School. Has had a total of four cases, so I think one of the gentlemen spoke to ten to fifteen. It's had four. Um, the high school is the one that has had twelve. All the other schools are between zero and five. Um, the high school is the only place we've seen i- in-school transmission. There was one other one about a month ago. So we're watching very closely. I think we're comfortable with where we are right now. The high school will be, um, remote for two weeks. Um, as of right now, we don't see that we should be closing any of the other schools, but we're revisiting it every day. Um, and I just wanted to say, I've said this to the town manager, but I, I'd love to say this publicly. That the health department and the nursing department are phenomenal. They've been unbelievable for this entire time and I want to thank them. For their work and their service and we have their cell phones. We're in touch multiple times a day as needed. Um, we only had one, one school case over the weekend. Um, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week was where it was kind of busy, but, um. We'll, we're certainly open to changing course as needed over, especially over the next couple of weeks. We're watching very closely. But just thank you to everybody for their co-op, cooperation. We have colleagues in other towns. That don't experience what we experience here and it's really been very, very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Alteri, and, and I'll echo a little bit of what you said. This meeting, uh, was set up for today, which is Monday. Um, partly by communication that I had with, um, Cheryl yesterday, which is Sunday. So, um, Heather and Cheryl are working seven days a week for this town and, uh, that's really quite exceptional. So again, thank you from, from us to, to you guys. Are there other comments?
I do, I have, um, looks like two more, um. So I'm gonna allow call in user number one. Please identify yourself.
Hi, yes, um, I had similar concern that, um, to tear up from what's happened, uh, that, that Jason had, but I'm satisfied with the answer. Um, I also, I sent an email relative to, uh, it was Roach Brothers that had all the cashiers open, but, uh. About recreation. I'm on a lot of different social networks and we're having these wonderful social events, open mics, people reading poetry. Playing music, showing art, and I hope that the town engages in some of that recreation type stuff, um. For those who may not be in social networks like, like I'm lucky and privileged enough to be in. Um, and then the last thing is that I hope you scare the heck out of people. I hope that the mail that goes out is very serious. And has very big red letters and, um, just the, the one that went out last time and I'm really grateful for that. Uh, but it was kind of like, um, you know, it was like alert, there's some information and it really wasn't enough. At least the people that I showed it to didn't seem to be that concerned. And when I'm going around trying to get people concerned, I would like very much to hold a letter that's coming from the town that says, alert. Be concerned, this is serious, um, or something like that, to scare the heck out of people. And also the signs around town, I mean, they're, they're great and they say, you know, uh, here's some information that's important, but it doesn't. It's not scary and I feel like we need to get scared. I feel like that's worth the time for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. Cheryl, I think we have t- time for maybe one more.
Okay, um, so this is JW BMD. Please identify your, um, name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Dr. John Blute. I'm a retired orthopedic surgeon and a resident of Acton for the last forty years, living in eleven Bryan Hill Road. I thought Ms. York's, um, recommendations for upcoming communication were, um, very much on target. I won't speak to the words that, uh, may be used or how scary they may or may not be, but clearly. There's increasing virus in our community, in our town. And we're all making decisions and our family just went through this for the Thanksgiving holidays. And in similar fashion to what I think other families are doing, we decided to remain essentially isolated. And communicate, um, later in the day by Zoom. But not sharing in-person communication, even though we had a good environment and people who were really thinking about this, so. And the next communication goes out, I would emphasize this strongly because we've got. Uh, a second, uh, good holiday coming up, uh, in just four weeks. And people will be getting together and making decisions and whatever can be done to do it as safely as possible. With this virus expanding into our very rebounding areas in our homes, our schools. I think we should do that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So if there is no further comment or discussion from, uh, members of the boards, either board, um. I think we have probably concluded tonight's business. Mr. Benson?
Yeah, just, um, it's, um, you know, people ask me, you know, what, you know, you know, what can I do? What can I do to protect myself? Well, you know, on the careful, careless spectrum, just wear a real mask. And, you know, and stay distance and, um. You know, I, I just hate to say we're in for, gonna be in for a tough leak winter and when you hear reports that two million travelers. Were through airports over the weekend, I hate to think what that's gonna look like in a couple of weeks and.
Right.
You know, on the positive side, um, the, the GSA did announce tonight that they've signed off on the paperwork. That the presidential transition can proceed and we're gonna have a new president and we have promising vaccines, so. Let's hope, you know, a year from now, we're in a, a lot better place, but be careful.
Indeed, thank you. Mr. Condeby?
Yeah, I think we need to make sure that a message we send out is clear and concise, whether it be factual. Really, I think the two big points are, one, for folks to minimize their at-risk activities. And second off, practice the three things that help best distancing and hygiene. We can focus on those two things. I think that'll be the best part of the message. Hopefully we can all, uh, be safe and be well.
Indeed, have a happy Thanksgiving. All right, well, um, if there is no further business, um, I would suggest that our board, um. Take the lead by adjourning. So did any member care to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, can we suggest when the next meeting would be? We have so many folks watching.
Oh, certainly. I believe we're, um, scheduled, our next scheduled meeting is the Monday after Thanksgiving.
November thirtieth.
Make sure we post it and invite everyone to attend, all members of the public and. We certainly appreciate all the staff work and all the work and all the other folks in the community providing input.
Indeed. Was that a, was that a motion, Mr. Condeby?
Sure.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Dr. Bill, where are you? Um, I'm sorry, who said, who said second? Um I'm sorry, who said who said second? Did did you? Uh, okay, well, I believe we have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Uh members, I'll I'll take a poll. I'll go down the list. Um, Dr. Bill? You just froze. Oh, no, there you go.
Yes, I, hi.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Cottabey?
Hi.
Ms. Paceta?
Hi.
Okay, we are, we stand adjourned. Mr. Benson, over to you.
Yes, okay, uh the next meeting of the select board will be Monday uh uh December seventh at at seven PM. It's remote. Um do I have a motion to adjourn? Joan, um is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh Jim, Jim seconds. Uh David, if you please call the roll.
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Hi.
Ms. Gardner?
Hi.
Mr. Charter?
Hi.
Mr. Benson?
Hi.
And Isaiah, I say we're adjourned.
Thank you all. A good holiday.
Likewise. Thank you again to everyone. Good night.
Bye-bye.